I know I'm gonna flip that over to work, it's too good.
Here again.
Alright, and then I close this, right? I close this.
Yeah. There you go. Got it.
(inaudible)
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 Oh, no. Sorry. That's not so bad.
(inaudible)
No. (inaudible)
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 You know, there's a big town leadership?
Oh. (inaudible)
And that one, are you gonna wear another?
(inaudible)
It's my family job.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Oh, it's not.
(inaudible)
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 I have been this.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah.
Okay.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah.
Just get rid of one serving.
Yeah.
(inaudible)
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 Only an Asco County Council meeting for March 4th in order. (inaudible) (inaudible)
Councilmember Ray Berger.
Present.
Councilmember Thelma Gillespie.
Present.
Councilmembers Cindy Holder.
Present.
Councilmember Joy Moreno.
Present.
Councilmember Sarah Knox. Councilmember Nathan Awgwall.
Present.
And Mayor Koffey.
Present.
Form is established.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. (inaudible) 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 One nation, under God, in the great good and justice of God.
He is present. (inaudible)
Make a motion. Um. Consideration and approval of meeting minutes from February 28th. (inaudible) I'm sorry.
(inaudible)
My backpack tipped me.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Has everybody had a chance to, uh, answer it? Uh, any corrections or adjustments?
Uh, just a few.
Yeah, Sarah advised us. I think there were seven.
Hi, yeah. I forgot to establish that. People. I heard Bob Spock and Colton Williams. I'm sorry. In Bob Spock and Colton Williams, a little dramatic things there. Miss Spock. Is that a little dramatic?
Dramatic.
Oh. Okay. (inaudible)
Any substantiated amendments? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Is that it?
I'm simple, Mr. Mayor.
Second? Thank you. All in favor of discussions? All in favor?
I have just one more note of discussion. I would just like to, um, thank, the format has been changed to a real format for the minutes and not a whole lot of hyperbole and filler. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Matt, how many people are here to speak about the dog problem? So you want to? Okay. Um. We're gonna bump that up, uh, just so that, uh, get that out of the way. Uh, I guess, uh, first of all, we'll, we'll turn it over to our town manager. Uh, that's what they work with some background about it, and then we can have public comment. And if your questions get answered by him, or the chief.
Right, and I'm, in all likelihood, I'm gonna turn answers over to chief. But about, I'm gonna say about a month to six weeks ago, we started having reports of a dog that was, uh, running loose, uh, in town. And then we started to get more stories about how the dog was becoming aggressive towards other dogs, and then we had more stories about how it, it was, uh, being aggressive towards, um, the dog walkers. Um, and obviously, right away, the chief and his team were advised, um, we've, we've found the dog, but it was very hard to find where the dog lived. So we were following the dog around, and we followed it all the way over to the other side of town where we thought we had located it. Um, but apparently, the dog owners used to live there, but they don't anymore, so the dog was going back to its old haunt, so we, we were wrong about where the dog lived. Then we finally, on the fifteenth of March, learned where the dog lived, and they were immediately notified with a letter by chief saying that they, they had a dog on the loose and that it was violating the leash law and other such things. As soon as, um, they were able to, at that point, they also issued a summons for breaking the leash law and also for, uh, the dogs not being vaccinated for rabies. Uh, since that time, the dog had been found, uh, loose again, and each time, the owners were given a citation, uh, most recently yesterday. Um, then yesterday, there was a much more egregious and violent attack in town, and, uh, we, this morning, talked to the, uh, town's attorney, and I, I reviewed the state code, which has a little bit more detail about what we're allowed to do as a result, as in response. Now that the, now that the, uh, the dog owner has been, um, issued summons, after the summons, prior to the, uh, the court date, which is mid-April, okay? Prior to the court date in mid-April, um, we've issued a letter that basically says if the dog is found loose again, animal control will go to the house, take the dog into its custody, and confine it until the court hearing at that time in mid-April to find out if this is considered what the state code considers a dangerous dog. At that point, it's in the court's hands. Um, you know, the one thing I would say is that, you know, we, we've all tried desperately to catch this dog, but as soon as you get up on it, it runs. Um, so it's been, it's been, um, difficult, but we know who the owners are, they've been summoned, they've been, um, told as far as today that we're gonna remove the dog from their, um, from their home if the dog is found to be loose at any point between now and the time of the court hearing. So I, I think that's as good a synopsis as I can bring, but this dog has caused, uh, trauma and, and horrible anxiety around town. You see our, our dog walkers walking with sticks and clubs and things like that, and that's just not who we are, but there's also limitations on how we can respond. So with that, I'm, I'm more than happy to try to answer questions, and when I say I, I really am gonna lean back and let chief do the talking at this point.
All right, any, uh, public comment or questions after that? Okay. Okay. Um, okay. Yeah. I'm gonna make it counsel. It's like a chief, you have anything to ask, or?
No, I mean, we've really been trying, we've given our days all. Um, I've got eight. I've really got plenty to put with the animal, and it even knows my car at this point. If he's my car, it runs. We, we tried, it, it's hard enough to catch a person, this I had something three times smaller than three times faster. (laughing)
We're trying, yes. Yeah.
Uh, my question is, um, because we know the dog is a problem, and we know that the dog owners are, are not being responsible enough to keep him confined, can we not? I, I remember going to the, um, to the shelter one day, and there were two dogs in there that were under confinement, they were in jail because their court date was coming. Um, so can this dog not be confined right now because he's already been a problem? And because he's, he must be an escape artist as well? So can we just confine him?
We've looked into it, and we're afraid to define a dog that has not had a, by the lack of a term, nobody thinks wrong, a true attack with injuries, that a vet said was caused by itself.
So is, right now, it's just an annoyance, or, and, I mean, you know, that's, that's seems to be too light of a way to handle it, but, um, because the dog has caused bodily harm already.
Hundred percent?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. There, yes?
Yes.
Um, can, you know, can you not say this dog needs to be confined just for his own sake, so, so nobody else hurts him either? Because people are carrying sticks, and if someone, and it comes up on somebody, it's gonna get hurt.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but unfortunately, the way the law is written, the dog must call the injury, not the injury at the defense.
Okay.
So the dog has to attack, he can't preach strength before it goes.
I know, that says something about in that law that about the breaking of the skin, and that the, the vet has to say it's a, a bite, and it's a this, it's a that.
Yes, law to it.
Well, that comes under the vicious part of it. Matt, we discussed today the leash law, and you ran that by our attorneys, and at this point, what is the penalty for a dog?
This leash law is only a twenty-five dollar fine, but we've talked about, um, revising the leash law and putting ordinance together for nuisance animals, which would cover us rather than putting it as a dangerous dog.
Right.
Putting it as a nuisance animal. As a nuisance animal, chief pulled this up today from Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach. So this is a Virginia city with a nuisance animal ordinance in place, um, that we put together, so I have a draft ordinance for you to consider, and then we can also have (inaudible) that we can put this in place as quickly as the law allows.
Would that be more effective than a leash law?
Well, if the leash law would, we would, my recommendation is that we raise the fine for the second and any subsequent violations from twenty-five dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I see.
The leash law is a class four misdemeanor, there's nothing I can do to raise it beyond two-hundred-and-fifty. That, that's the maximum when I'm allowed for that classification. Now, if it, if it does attack a person, or it breaks the skin, or does anything along those lines, then it becomes a class six felony, which becomes a completely different thing, and that's where chief does his job. Um, so the, the, the changes that I have proposed in the dog ordinance is, first of all, correcting the rule of leash, but secondly, changing the fine from twenty-five dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty.
(inaudible) Certain table.
(inaudible) And then we also found in the same ordinance in Virginia Beach where they put a barking dog nuisance, so we, I put that in as well as a separate barking dog section, which you wanted with it, but I wanted to grab everything that I could grab that's related to nuisances for dogs, not just dangerous dogs, because dangerous dogs are tough to prove, we're all learning that, but nuisance dogs, this dog would have immediately pulled that.
Did we pass, uh, the council see this ordinance tonight and move this forward?
Yeah. I have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing, but I can advertise that public hearing as soon as Friday. All we need to do is get a date that you folks can convene for now.
(inaudible)
That's right. That's right. It's not, it's not gonna help with this.
They're not gonna.
We need to, we need to confine this animal.
Well, the, the question is, is, is the new, new, if the nuisance, if this nuisance chapter is in, in effect, how would it have respect, how would it have affected this dog?
It would have gotten very expensive.
Quickly. It's still a fine and not, you can grab the dog earlier or not?
Well, the, the grabbing of the dog is after a summons is issued before the court date, if the dog is considered to be, to remain dangerous, or if the owner doesn't, I'm gonna say perfectly confine it, because I don't know of another, shoot, if, if it gets loose between the time of the summons and the court date, we have to write according to, to our attorney to confine that animal, and the animal control people would have to do it, because honestly, we don't have a place to put a dog.
But how would the new, how would this nuisance thing, would it speed up the process?
It would, uh, it would, it would not only speed up the process, but it would also allow us to, to find those folks for, that's not considered dangerous dog, but it's considered, uh, was it at-large?
At-large.
At-large, yeah.
So, okay, so if this dog came up to somebody and, you know, was, was aggressive and did something, we could fine him for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, but they knew in this, they get fined immediately with two-fifty?
Not immediately, no, it's the second violation. The first one, you get a warning.
Okay, and the second, you get two-fifty, then, 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 then you can go get the requirement, put the dog, I've read the ordinance.
Right, if it's one no one has, because I just finished fifteen minutes ago, so, um, the, my understanding, and you can chime in anytime you want, um, my understanding is that the officer has discretion, so that if, if my dog's been here for five years, it's never had a problem, it steps off the property, comes up and sniffs somebody, and they get scared, that, that would be officer discretion, say, hey, Matt, your dog got out and, you know, scared, you know? So then, the other kind would be, hey, if this dog got out and attacked another person or another dog, that's obviously a different level.
(inaudible)
But we would, at this point, have both in our ordinances, not just one. Okay?
And this one's just powered, if it acts aggressive. Like, the ordinance. You're not getting a vet married, vet, no, the dog.
No. All right. The nuisance is an act aggressive, the dangerous is proven to be aggressive according to the state code, which is a high standard.
Right. So, uh, we need to read this ordinance over, and then we could, uh, counsel, if we can, we can, you know, we can tell you to go ahead into the public hearing, if we, we can, uh, we.
Right, and if I can, sorry, I can advertise the public hearing as soon as Friday, but I need to get it in the paper, probably by, I need to get the request to put the ad into the paper by, like tomorrow, end of day, maybe till eleven o'clock on, on Wednesday?
Well, I mean, we, we have to have a date for the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, that's why I did it last night. And we go, uh, so we need to set it, uh, we obviously want to, we want to proceed with this, right?
Right, so, or do that, we have to read this and vote.
No, not, not.
And understand.
No, we're not voting on any.
You know.
All we're voting on is when, what happens, advertising for the hearing.
To add.
We have to have public input before we can.
(inaudible)
We, 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 this is proposal, we've done it, we've already written the ordinance. We're gonna put it in front of the, we've made, Matt basically done, done the groundwork, and we're gonna.
And you're not like, it, it doesn't, it's.
(inaudible)
Well, though, we have, you can amend it at, at the public hearing. Yeah, it's not fixed, so, uh, we can't make it worse.
Right. You, you can amend it even up to the public hearing, because that's the purpose of a public hearing, if they say something that you want to include, then you would include that, so.
That's the purpose of the public.
This gives you the, the template to have the public comment on, you, you amend it all the way up to.
Right, I'm ready to vote. So we need to, uh, we can still, we can think about it in a schedule with, uh, public hearing, we can schedule the public hearing right off. Of their council.
There are a couple of chairs up in the front.
The, uh.
How soon?
It's gotta be advertised, it's set, no sooner than seven days after the date advertised, so if it's advertised on the first, then the earliest you could reasonably have it would be the eleventh. The next town council meeting is the twenty-fifth, so.
I mean, isn't, this is not, question, this is not gonna affect this dog that's running with his now.
Exactly.
So what's the, you know, why we, why we have a special meeting? And the chances of dog, and we've had, we've had one dog in what, five years, or, you know?
No.
More, I guess we had.
Last year was me constantly calling the police, the dog.
What's also accountable? Uh, yeah.
Why I'm not ready to be at all.
Because we're not gonna get it passed for number.
Because we, you know.
Huh? It's, the dog, you know, I mean.
Hopefully this won't, this won't affect this dog, we're hoping the problem won't.
The dog is, if we catch the dog out again, it's locked up.
Right.
Right, and this ordinance won't change that.
That's right.
Right, so we're, we're set, this dog is, we don't, if it gets out again, it's gonna be locked up.
Normal, if any fine other than what's already in our, on the record, can be imposed.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, so, and this really isn't about the fine anyway.
It's, it's, it's like every other law, for law by citizens.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of finding somebody to, the dog, first time their dog gets out.
No.
If some chihuahua wants a brush. Yeah, yeah.
If, if, if bond's still staying, the dog, I think it's twenty-five dollars. (inaudible) It, it's still all your discretion, if a dog comes to your house, you pet your dog for five years, and this is the first time.
It says that the owner shall receive a letter from the town department notifying the owner of the violation. Second and subsequent violation, summons will be issued in the email.
But the nuisance thing's different.
Our current code says twenty-five dollars.
The nuisance thing, they have to be out twice, and then within twelve months, and, or aggressive.
Well, let's look at the ordinance, we haven't had a chance to read it, let's look it over, and we got a chance to talk about it at the, you wanna set a special meeting?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Um, okay. All right, we need, guess we might.
Okay, we combine a special meeting with a, with a workshop, with a budget. We, we need some more workshop on the budget, and I would like to do, give them, do both at the same time.
Do the, the eleventh would be the soonest that we could do that, and then anytime thereafter, up to you guys.
There, anybody?
I have no problem.
I'm good to eleven. (inaudible)
Two weeks.
Okay.
I got, I got no problem with that either, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll.
A good comment from the audience.
Yes.
I just have a question.
Can I get the states fixed first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, sorry, yeah, let me get the state first.
Monday, April eleventh.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
What time?
Uh, we, we do the, do the, six, is that what they say?
Six of five.
Six of four.
No, earlier than six.
(inaudible)
Right at your time.
Yeah. We need eleven.
How are you?
Seven, I, if you want to do seven, that's fine. Is it better? So, that's just the second.
Seven?
Seven, that's ten. I'm not gonna, I, I can imagine. And then the workshop, we can, we advertise the workshop, and if we have questions.
I'll advertise the public here, or the, um, the public hearing and the workshop. That'll be everybody?
Yeah. All right, questions, I'm sorry.
I just have a question, what is the attitude of the owners toward, you know, what the dog is doing? Are they really making us (inaudible) all that bad, or are they kinda, eh, who cares?
Well, put it, I can't tell you what his attitude is, but, but this way, it's still getting out.
It's what?
It's still getting out of that property, off the property. Today, it was more of a compliance attitude, I will say that.
As I'm willing to, to try to keep it in.
Yes.
Uh, may I ask, how many complaints have you received about this dog?
Honestly, it's a very hard one to answer, because a lot of them's coming in from town office, and we're getting, hey, we got five that says it's here, twelve says it's here, that's high numbers, you know that, right? So, actual complaints is larger than what you think, it's a lot of people reporting, seeing a dog, I mean, a couple weeks, a week ago, got reports, three reports of seeing this dog, and it was a, not this dog, so.
I know, we called in the first time, February eleventh, and done it three times since, so that's four, so I would imagine you've had.
Oh, yeah, we've, it's been thirty, I mean, oh, between now and then.
There's your calls about citing the.
Citing.
Citing of the dog off the leash, not, that's not a, an aggressive act by the dog to a person, or to, or to another dog.
No, most of them, no, hundred percent of our calls have been, the dog just walked in my house.
Well, a lot of people know we're looking for the dog.
Yes, yeah, we definitely got that one.
Well, most people are afraid of the dog.
Yeah, right, no, it's, it's not.
I wasn't afraid of him, he wasn't aggressive at all to me, I'm just saying my personal experience, it was not aggressive at all, he was, he actually thought he wanted to play with the dog.
Oh, you had a dog, were you walking with the dog?
Yeah.
He was aggressive to us.
I'm just saying, I didn't say that to you, I said my personal experience, and I'm saying he was to us.
Anybody, any other questions about the dog? All right, I think we'll move on, I can't see anybody, anybody, all right? Okay, well, thank you, uh. Okay, hopefully the dog, the dog is out again, but he's gonna be picked up.
That's, that's the solution.
That's the bottom line, yeah, right, yeah. Uh, move on to the, back to the schedule of public business, uh, historic and Hancock School Performance Pavilion.
I can give a quick reason why we're, why it's on the agenda, and then Rick, I want him to talk about.
It's on, otherwise, so, just, you can just.
You gotta hold it right up to your mouth, so. There you go. You can go ahead. Okay. Uh, my name's Rick King, and, uh, just, uh, we've been, my wife and I both have volunteers at the historic Hancock School, uh, as you know, I'm on the board over there. Um, what we're proposing is a multi-purpose performance pavilion, um, you know, to be utilized for, to be utilized, hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, to be utilized for, like, outdoor theater, symphonies, band performances, outdoor speaking engagements, children's events, weddings, that type of thing, so it's a true multi-purpose, uh, uh, pavilion. Obviously, the benefits to this pavilion, it will help, obviously, the (inaudible), uh, it'll help support, raise funds for, uh, things like, you know, you gotta redo the roof, that type of thing, so, uh, there's a lot of continued improvements at the historic and Hancock School that need, that do need to be done. Uh, it's also gonna, uh, create an increased economic, uh, activity for the town of Hancock, providing in, increased cultural and civic events, uh, for the town of Hancock, providing, um, you know, not just for the town, but also for the county and the eastern shore of the pavilion, so, um, as we grow, we'll be able to continue to schedule increased numbers of events in the future, and, uh, all of, all of this will help draw, will help draw increased tourism to the, to the town, people come in for, whether it's a concert or a safety event, that type of thing, we hope they'll stay another day or another two days, uh, enjoy the amenities and enjoy our town, uh, pray for the town and for the, as well as the county and the eastern shore is holding.
So does everybody, can you tell the audience where the, first of it's gonna look like, and where it's gonna be? We, we have a map here, but they don't.
Okay. If, if you're at all familiar, if you're at all familiar with the historic and Hancock School on Olive Avenue, toward the rear of the school, it'll be located, uh, only about a hundred and thirty-five to forty feet behind the school, uh, it's a open-air, uh, performance pavilion, it'll be under roof, open on the sides, uh, there'll be two little storage areas, one, one essentially for electrical, uh, for sound and, and lighting, that type of thing, the other one is just storage, small, you know, ten-by-twelve storage areas on each side of the containing net footprint, um, it'll be focused, if you're familiar with the school, sort of toward the, the, if you're facing it, school will be that back left-hand corner of the school, uh, so that the sound doesn't hit the building, it'll go through, and, uh, but I think that's, that's all I can describe it, um, but. Northwest corner. But I'm going to, I can't. But if, if anybody is. But if, if anybody is.
Which way is it facing?
It'll, it'll face the, the northwest, no, 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 it's facing.
Face the school.
Facing the school with the northwest corner. So you can't face it directly at a building because then the sound just reverberates back to the. We've had, we've had a lot of different people come out here and take a look at it. We've had the theater group. We've had some, uh, people, uh, the people from the town band, that type of stuff. Out there and look at it and everyone's in full agreement that it needs to face, uh, just to the right of the school.
But it's not in the soccer field.
No.
No, ma'am.
It's going to sit closer to the playground and face the soccer field, kind of.
Yes.
Aim towards the soccer.
Yes.
Actually, it'll be.
Not, not the northwest corner of the, of the block, but the north, off of the northwest corner of the school.
Oh, yeah, but not facing, you know, facing the northwest corner of the school.
No, no, I'm saying it's going to be built in the northwest corner of the property.
Yeah. So it's facing back parking, the old parking lot, back. Yeah, it's, it's facing soccer field, yeah.
Facing between the school building and the home.
Yeah, okay. Right. Um, all right, well, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, you hear me back and explain what, yeah.
Yeah, the reason that we need to have it coming before council, you, the building was originally slotted to be built just inside the RPA, which was required mitigation. And, and it created a lot of complications. The team at the school has moved it completely out of the RPA bumper zone. So it's a perfect spot, perfect location. We're really excited about this building. Um, but the lease requires town council approval to build any building on that property. Because the town still owns the school building and the property. So it's really requiring a motion from you folks to allow for the construction of this performance venue on the school site.
So do we have a motion?
Motion first or question?
Motion, then we have comments. We gotta have a motion, Scott. Do we have a motion?
That we allow the, I mean, our custom question to build the, the building on.
Second, second. Discussion.
Two questions. One, is the, is the school securing funding for it or where is the funding?
I understand you, but not most of them. No, well, we, we've got fund raised. Well, the prices are going up, so we'll have a little bit more fundraising in the, we're ready to move forward upon zoning and then of course building.
And then my other question is, is this to scale?
No. Because it's, it's further away.
But the, the size of the footprint compared to the size of the school building, it looks bigger than the main part of the school building.
It's, it's, it's not, it's.
And that feels very disproportionate to me.
And that's what, again, we'll get, we'll ask to this point, we'll go ahead and spend the money to do the engineering and get correct. All we, all we could do at the time was the best we could have taken the, you know, um, uh, Google art. And then we just tried to apply something on there to, to give a general ideal where it sits. So, so it's not totally ignorant. I, I stepped it off today. It, it's about a hundred and thirty-five feet in the back of the building at the closest point to, to the front of it. It's about a hundred and thirty-five feet. The building's about a hundred and twenty-eight foot front to back. And then just from the school to, to the road is about a hundred and twenty-eight feet roughly.
No, it's, it's, it's.
No, it's, the overall width.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Five fifty-two.
And approximately, how many people? I've heard of the seat five hundred people.
The lawn seats by their.
Yeah. It's just lawn seating for now. I mean, eventually we'll probably tear civil or something in the future, but that's, that costs money. So.
I think this is wonderful. I think this is a real benefit to the town.
How soon can you do it?
Do those to you and Johnny and Lauren and everybody involved, that's great.
Now, we're looking forward to it. I honestly, we hope to get it in, in the round by the end of this year, be ready for next spring. But that will, like I said, I got, I couldn't, wasn't willing to spend any more money on this until we knew we were moving in the right direction. Now I can go ahead and start moving toward construction plans and so forth. I did an engineer, was taken out and all that kind of stuff.
I think it would be crazy to say anything but yes.
All right, any other comments? Okay, let's, uh, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
The next item on the budget is the, uh, is the public hearing for the home stay at five White Street.
Three White Streets, sorry. Yeah, five White Streets where the folks live, three White Streets, the neighborhood house.
Okay, so I'm going to formally open the public hearing, uh, and, uh, is there, is there a deal with you?
Yes.
George, you here? You want to make any, uh, comments or you?
Yes. Um, well, thank you for considering the application. We're very excited about the project. I think this is going to be a, um, a great addition to the town. It's going to be a four-bedroom, three-bath, three-and-a-half-bath waterfront home. With access to the creek with the kayak raft and boat launch. So we're excited about it. The house needs a lot of work. Um, but we're looking forward to getting started.
Does everybody on council know what brought three months of that in?
Yeah.
The house has been vacant for about twenty-five years. So, yeah, so we're, we're looking forward to getting it. We think it's going to be a big, big.
Where is it?
Um, it's on White Street. So if you go over, if you go over the bridge. If you go over the bridge, um, by the morning, take a, take the first, uh, point. Actually, the third house on the left. It's the old, the old white house that's been sitting there since, we think it was last inhabited around nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
So, so it needs a tremendous amount of power. And, um, we're, what you're looking to getting started on is, you know, this is the first step.
Mr. Phillips, are you planning on keeping the existing footprint of the house?
Yes. Yeah, we have the, the entire house sits within the RPA. So there's going to be, um, if there's any, there may be some rearrangement of some, 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 some of the square footage. Um, but it's going to stay within that, that square footage for the house. Any additions that we put on probably won't happen for some time in the future. And they would go towards the street instead of, on, you know, that's, that's, would be our limitation then.
Are there any public comments on this? Okay, I have three, uh, letters, uh, here. Uh, they all seem to be a form letter, so I'm just going to read one and just tell you who signed it. But, uh, this is in relation to this, uh, property. Uh, dear mayor and council, uh, please record for the record that we have no, uh, objections regarding the conditional use application submitted by George and Linda Phillips to operate a home stay at three White Street. We have discussed their plans and understand that it is their intent to operate the home stay in accordance with the town's rules and regulations. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or need any additional information. And I have three. They're all, all say the same thing about, this one's from Dick, Dick Schreiber, Timothy and Catherine McCutcheon. And, um, Karen.
Gravel.
Gravel, okay. So, uh, those three are in support of the, uh, and I assume they're, they're all close neighbors.
But at least Karen is here and is a.
I live directly across the street and we're very close neighbors.
All right, so, uh, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is not closed. Any comment, council, or a motion?
I'm just happy, an old house is being reused.
Well, especially since the owner lives next door too.
Right. I believe that we approved, thank you.
Okay.
Same application.
Is there a written motion in here?
There is. Um, I can read for it if you want.
My pleasure.
Does Mr. Mayor, I move to approve special use permit vote one dash twenty-two with the following requirements. Up to eight guests may occupy the home stay at any one time. All guests must park in off-street spaces provided the agree. The owner agrees with the terms of code thirty-eight dash seventy-seven adopted by town council on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And the owner agrees to file transient occupancy tax report quarterly as required by code sixteen dash seventy-two through sixteen eighty-one, even if there is no revenue to report.
So moves on. Now, second?
Second.
Discussion? All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote? All righty. Uh, the second, uh, third public business is the, uh, the public hearing for the, uh, home stay at twelve Join Street. Uh, now I'm going to open this public hearing. Is it Mark, she here? Yes. Yeah, you want to make a comment or?
Be available for any questions?
I, I think, I think she were here at the ever. Yeah, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what you're doing there. Okay, any con, any public comment on Mrs. Mabara's application? And I have one, uh, that somebody sent in, uh. I'm, I, I am unable to get to the public meeting hearing for Susan Mabara's application this evening. Would like you to enter this in for minutes. My primary residence is eight Join Street, one property down from Mrs. Mabara. I also own ten Holly Street, which is directly behind and adjacent to Mrs. Mabara's backyard. We have been neighbors for several decades. I've always found her to be courteous and considerate neighbors. At one time, she also owned property on the other side of my Holly Street location, which she used as a rental. During this time, she owned the property. She was, she was engaged in conscientious landlord. I believe Mrs. Mabara will continue to be an outstanding in her current endeavor as a home stay. I strongly encourage you to approve the request for a special use permit to use her home as a home stay. Thank you, Mary Clemens. And that's the only correspondence we have on that. All right, any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on, uh, this one. All right, um, back to council, uh, comments? Or we have, I guess we need a motion first.
We'll read it this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve SUV, um, special use permit zero-two, poem twenty-two with the following requirements. Up to two guests may occupy the home stay at any one time. All guests must park in the off-street spaces provided. The owner agrees with the terms of section thirty-eight dash seventy-seven as adopted by town council on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Owner agrees to file transient occupancy tax reports quarterly as required by section sixteen dash seventy-two through section sixteen dash eighty-one, even if there's no revenue to report.
Do we have a second on it? So, uh, discussion? All in favor?
I just want to say something. Uh, Susan, this is the original intent of Airbnb. The founders during a presidential election many years ago, started Airbnb by having people stay in people's houses in Washington DC. So you are following the original intent of Airbnb. Congratulations.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote? All right. That's, that's, uh, um, public opinion's part of it. Uh, council discussion, uh, zoning classification for sewer pumping stations.
Yeah.
That sounds exciting.
This is exciting stuff. Everybody stays here. We have, uh, six pumping stations that we're going to be transitioning over to the ownership of HRSD. Currently, the closing documents, in order to transfer those assets or the parcels, require the zoning of those parcels to be ones that will allow for the operation of said pumping station in perpetuity. Our current zoning enumerations do not have such a classification. So I put a, uh, a change to section thirty-eight forty-three enumeration of districts. I added number nine, which is industrial utilities district IU. There's been no other change. Um, I've run this through our legal council and if there's any changes will be made to it prior to the public hearing. My recommendation is that we hold the public hearing at the next normally scheduled council meeting, um, on April twenty.
And the public hearing is just to approve this.
Anytime they change the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing.
Right, I understand. But, but there's, I mean, we have to do this anyway. Because it would be, it would be illegal for them to have the pumping station and, and zone.
Right.
So we have to create a zone so it can do it.
Definitely.
Any questions on this one? So.
Not on the, the content of it, but just when I was looking up the parcel numbers.
Yeah.
In acer map, some of those look really scrambled. And I know that's not something that the town office has control over.
No, you're, you're right. That's one of the things that's, I'm not going to say delaying, but it's taking a lot of time on these, these stations and also the other. We have a hundred and fifty-four easements and parcels where the, the collection system touches or move under. The surveyors that HRSD are saying exactly the same thing. Some of these parcels aren't clearly identifiable. But once we transfer it over, if they chose to re, um, to re-line those with the county, they can do it at that point.
So these are.
Do we actually own?
Yes. Yeah, they're not.
Midways.
Just to clarify that, I mean, just to, so we're clear on what it is, could there be a, a map included with the materials that shows?
Yeah, what I could do is if you remember, uh, the, the map that we put together for the, uh, for the home stays. I could shade in the sections that, these six parcels that relate to it. Because these are, some of these things appear to be in my people's backyards and whatnot.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, some of them are.
What did you mean, sir, by spring?
I mean, when I looked up the one that's, um, down by, um, South Street off from the town square. The map on the county, um, mapping system, tax mapping system, shows it in the right place. But the address that that gives.
The on the tax map?
Is fifteen North Street, which is that here?
Yes.
So that's the owner's.
Okay. So that's.
So that's why it's, some of these things are a little hard. So the surveyors are going out with the GIS and putting corner pins in all locations. So it'll be permanently marked.
All right, so we're, uh, we're going to schedule a public hearing and this will come back up.
Yeah, there's no action required.
Yeah, we're just going to have a public hearing next week and get a look at the map.
The attorney's going to review and make sure that it's ready for process.
One other question on that same page, which is hundred and thirty-six.
Yep.
At the bottom, it's, it looks like a sentence didn't quite get completed. This is preliminary, but in discussion. Team.
Yeah.
And then nothing else.
Yeah, well, I, I got.
Was there, was there more you?
No, this is very preliminary, but in discussion with HRSD. That, the, the reason for this, yes, thank you for pointing that out. The reason that that asterisk is there is because HRSD was going to purchase a small sliver of land from Escade. Right behind in order to put the corner of their parcel. Escade has decided not to sell that parcel to HRSD. So what we're going to do is if you, um, if you know the end apartment where our pump station is. And then if you know the tree line that separates sort of where we park our trucks currently, there's a seventy-foot parcel that we can locate this, um, this parcel off of Escade's property. But it's going to require a little bit of a redesign. So that's why this says, hey, we're going to have to shift a little bit the pump station. The, the Parkland Avenue pump station is probably one of the most critical portions of the entire pipeline up and down the shore. Because that's where everything from Nassau Otis goes, is into that pump station, which is why they're going to be rebuilding it. It's going to be, it, it's going to be significantly, I would say, more professional, cleaner, more, you know, it's, we'll have redundancies and things like that. But figure. So it's going to have to move off of where we have our pump station so they can construct it and still operate the pump station that's there. Once it's up and running and tied into the, to the gravity line and forced made out to Nassau Otis, then they'll dismantle the pump station that's there. And that will be available for us on the right way that we currently own.
So we're going to give them the property.
In all likelihood, I can't, the, the, to give you a sample of what the, the appraisal of the sliver of land in the back of Escade's property came in at thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, you know, there's other, there's all kinds of legal issues that could come up if they really wanted to because it's a utility, they could, they could take the property. But I just, I really want to discourage any of that. We got the property right back there. They can do a redesign pretty quickly, easily, to shift that rather than disrupting this, its operations in future plans. So that's, for thirty-five-hundred dollars, I don't know, maybe we'll sell it to them for thirty-five-hundred dollars because it's a similar size. Uh, you know, obviously, I'm gonna ask for that.
What size are we talking about?
Seventy.
Seventy by seventy?
Yeah, roughly seventy by seventy, but the, the new design is gonna have to be a little bit different shape because of where our existing pump station is. So that's why this is all still tenuous. But that pump station is gonna be back there.
Where is the pump station now?
Like, right back there. It's in the same, if you go to the end apartment?
Yeah.
There's not much.
Right, there, it's not much to look at now. It's inside the fence and kind of Nancy. That's the one they're gonna replace with, you know, it'll be concrete, three pump stations, uh, generator and all of that.
Is it, is it there?
Behind this?
When it's wet.
It'll be on this side of our pump station, so.
Alright, so we're gonna go after public hearing with this. Any other question? We got, we got another chance to look at this again, so. We're gonna do the public hearing at the next, our regular scheduled.
Regular scheduled meeting, yeah.
Are you gonna run this by the little lady, or do we need to do that?
It's, it's.
This is a courtesy.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I could talk with it, but it doesn't go anywhere near the property or, or here or parking or anything else.
Does it matter, time, timing of this? I mean, is?
The surveyors are still plotting along.
I was only thinking in terms of the public hearing we have coming up.
Oh, we can, I mean, if we could do it then, and you feel comfortable with it? I gotta still. Yeah, that's, that's completely up to you. I mean, Rachel, the attorney, has had a chance to review it already. She hasn't come back with any comments, but she's also, uh, there's, there's other things.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, we're gonna be here anyway, hold another public hearing, end of the line.
I got it.
Yeah, I can't imagine that being all a penalty.
Advertise it.
Okay.
So, why not?
Alright, uh, in the final, let's see, the, uh, council discussion is the, uh, the post-budget, uh, workshop budget presentation.
Yeah, we had to, one second. So back on the fifteenth of the month, the council held its first budget workshops, where it reviewed the, um, basically the accomplishments from twenty-twenty-two that achieved the results that they have set out for last year's budget. Then we talked a little bit about the outside influences that are affecting us as a community. Predominantly, it's the real estate assessed values from Akron County, went up in the town of Nagcock for an average of eighteen-point-eight percent. That I will say, um, in order to become an average, there are several higher than that and some lower than that. So, uh, that's how averages come in. So, I mean, I know, my personally, I work well in excess of twenty-five percent. So the average increase was eighteen-point-eight percent. Also, the, uh, NADA value for used cars has increased this past year substantially, and that's gonna pass through the personal property tax, um, values assessed by the county. Uh, our medical insurance costs went up eight-and-a-half percent. Wages are going, uh, a little higher on the shore. They're probably going higher. Um, our fuel costs are going up over twenty percent, and inflation right now is being posted at about seven-point-nine percent. So there's a lot of outside influence that council had to deal with, uh, in order to make this budget balanced. Have come up with a budget that's balanced that would reduce our proper, our real estate taxes from thirty-two down to twenty-nine cents. Uh, we would reduce the property taxes on the vehicles from two dollars down to a dollar seventy. Now, all other property taxes for individuals would remain at two dollars. It's only this one tax type that would reduce from two to the dollar seventy. And that's just because we wanna, we don't wanna see people's vehicles cost that much more. So we can reduce our tax rate, bring in the same number of dollars, and not let people get hurt in the town by the increased assessments on their personal vehicles.
What is this, what, what does the county do on that? I mean, we pay county as well, so that.
Yeah, the advertisement for the real estate taxes that the county just published.
He's on personal property for cars, right?
Yeah, the personal property for cars, I know that, um, I know that they're leaving the current and proposed rates the same for cars. Um, but I also think that there's a, there's a note at the bottom that says personally-used vehicles, valued at a thousand or less, don't have any. They've got a PPTRA that covers that also for vehicles. The first twenty-thousand dollars of value, they get PPTRA out, which is a personal property tax relief back from the state. But they're not showing any reduced rates. They're also not showing any reduced rates for the, uh, real estate. So, the current rate is sixty-one cents. With the increase in the assessments, there, what's called a lowered rate would be fifty-six and a half. What a lowered rate means is what the rate would need to be in order to raise the same number of dollars with the new assessments. So, in our case, we raised four-hundred thousand and a little bit more on real estate taxes. In order for us to raise that same four-hundred thousand and a little bit for the increased assessment, our lowered rate is twenty-seven cents. So in order for us to raise, to get the same dollar amount, yeah, to get the same number of four-hundred thousand and a little bit, currently, we charge thirty-two cents on the hundred-dollar for real estate taxes. Our lowered rate would be at twenty-seven cents. The budget that we reviewed at the first workshop is twenty-nine cents. So we'd actually be lowering our real estate bracket, our rate pretty significantly. And I think there's some thoughts on how we might be able to make that even better.
Vehicles.
Yeah.
According to the Mountain States Department, the county stating there will be no increase in taxes on vehicles.
I don't know.
Mountain States Department? Or, I'm sorry, Eastershire Post?
Just checking where we're.
And Jackie Phillips, and they said the same thing. There will be no increase, definitely be no increase in taxes from the county for vehicles.
Right, I've talked with Mike Mason, and he was saying that there's a, there's a legislation going through the state that's gonna allow to break out the personal vehicles as a separate tax type. That separate tax type, they may reduce their rates to account for the, um, for the increase in assessment. I can't speak to the county. I don't know what they're doing, and I know that they're not.
So what, what, what's, what's the briefing of the county?
Are you saying we're doing the same thing?
No, we're lowering ours.
We're lowering.
Yeah, we're lowering ours on vehicles from two dollars to a dollar seventy. That'll raise the same number of dollars for us.
So nobody's gonna get a tax increase?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what.
So the vehicles are gonna go up on average twenty-two percent. And again, the average is created by a bunch of unlucky souls at the top end of that, too. So, you know, keep that in mind when you get your valuations. But, so we're looking, as a town, we didn't need to leave our rates the same in order to balance our budget. We were able to reduce our rates for both vehicles and, uh, real estate taxes to still balance our budget. The thing that I'm probably most proud of is that we were able to remove all personal property taxes on businesses. We've been talking about that for a long time. My, my goal here is not to tax people on tools they need to do their jobs. So we were able to remove the, the personal property taxes on businesses from this budget. We're gonna use town reserves to do a couple of things that I think are really important. One is, uh, to prepare a master plan for the town. The reason that we're looking to do a master plan for the town is because we've got so many initiatives going on and so many opportunities to go out seeking grant dollars, but none of us know exactly what picture we're going toward. And a town plan would paint that exact picture. So if somebody says, ooh, hey, there's a grant from A and N, oh, which is, and A and N, to replace all of our, uh, streetlights, well, we can go after that because now the town master plan would have exactly what the streetlights are gonna look at, exactly how many, what the ruins are in each area. You know, hey, we can go after one for signage. You know, now we know exactly what the signage is gonna look like, where it's gonna go. So the master plan gives us exactly the target that we can shoot for, and when opportunities come to raise money from grants or to ask money from grants, we'll know exactly what to apply for and how it will be used immediately, without having to, to waste time on that. That'll give us a competitive advantage on, uh, all of our grants. We're also gonna use town reserves to reduce water rates. This one's gonna take a second to explain, because when, when I think about water rates, I think about the, the minimum bill that we're required to pay each month if we receive less than three thousand gallons, which is a hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents. That one eleven eighty-seven should garbage and include sewer and include clean water. In order to make the budget balance, and I'm, I'm scooching it around a little bit, we get charged a hundred and two thousand dollars to Davis to pay our trash. The goal would be to have, charge people the amount of money that it costs Davis to pick it up. It's not a profit center for us, but it also shouldn't be a loss to you. So the, the rates for garbage next year increase to twelve dollars per month. That covers the exact cost that Davis charges us to pick up the trash. The sewer rates, because we were able to transfer over to HRSD, we're able to save a lot of money on that. So we're gonna use the published rates from HRSD for, for wastewater treatment. It's fifteen, twelve per thousand gallons. They build it a little bit differently than we do. There's no tiers for that. That's really important for those folks who don't use very much water. Currently, if you don't use very much water, you still pay the minimum. Under the new te, under the new scheme, they would not have to pay the minimum on wastewater treatment, which saves a lot of money. I went through an analysis and I did, they, um, I went through a one full year, and year that I used was eighteen nineteen. The reason I used twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is because twenty twenty.
You're not going back to, I think you're going back to.
The reason I went to those years is because twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were really anomalous as far as people's water use. I don't really was home. So now people are getting out, so I used twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We produced during that cycle, if anybody wants to know, four thousand two hundred and sixty-four bills. Of those, eleven hundred and eighty of the bills, like a quarter of them, were under three thousand gallons. And the average of those people were only twelve hundred and eighty-seven gallons. So that's a lot less than three thousand. So with the sewer, people only paying for the water, for the, the, for the water meter use, the actual use, brings their bill way down. So a person who receives the fixed bill right now and only uses that average of twelve eighty-seven gallons, their bill today is one eleven eighty-seven. Their bill on July second will be seventy-six dollars. So that's a huge savings, and that's the, that's the group of people I was working to protect in this. So, yes, we use one-time rate to reduce the water, because we have to, we have to balance the budget in the water silo as well. But the, the, that cost is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It costs us that because roughly a third of that is our debt service cost. We have zero interest loans. They're not gonna get any cheaper than that, no way, no how. But it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year to pay the bond payments. So that plus, you know, Victor's salary and the cost to do the billing and all of that, it costs four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and all the chemicals and everything else. So that's the number. So in order to balance it, we've got the water rates that appear to be significantly higher, thirty-two-ten. But once you take the dramatically lower sewer and the fact that the sewer's not built on a tier, it comes into that average savings of, of like forty dollars for one of the low-low users. The other folks I wanted to be able to make sure we didn't hurt were those middle-of-the-road folks, you know, people that use between seven and seventeen thousand gallons per billing cycle. Right now, the twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-three rates for those two classes, seventy-five hundred and seventeen thousand gallons respectively, those are about breakeven. So if you use a between seventy-five hundred and seventy thousand, your bill's gonna be about the same as it is today. Maybe a few bucks less, but about the same as it is today. And then the other group we wanted to make sure that we protected were those businesses that use water to do their work, whether it's the coin out, whether it's the car wash, whether it's the restaurants. We know they're heavy, heavy water users, and I wanted to give a deeper discount beyond what would be considered the fixed cost. Once they cover the cost of the debt and whatnot, their heavy, heavy use shouldn't penalize them. So the, the average reduction for somebody who uses thirty-five thousand gallons, and that sounds like a lot, but restaurants ring that bell just about every other month, and are coin out and, and, um, car wash, they fly back by this number. So currently, the thirty-five thousand gallon bill would be about eleven forty dollars. Under the new model, it's nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's a seventeen percent save. So our low volume saved twenty-five to thirty percent. A real high saved seventeen percent. And our middle-of-the-road, it's about breakeven.
I, I, my question was just kind of, I just wanted to know, um, the numbers you were throwing out there, restaurants are in that high, high number?
Many of them are, many of them are. Not all of them, you know, money, some of them might dip below, but at that point, if they dip below, it's a breakeven. So, nobody in this is getting hurt. Everybody's paying their fair share of the garbage, which is just, you know, left pocket, right pocket. We're charging it, we're paying it to Davis. So everything seems to be, I think this is a good model, and it helps a lot of people.
And you're saying that this includes a transfer?
Yes.
From reserve?
Yeah, that includes a fifty thousand dollar use of our unappropriate reserves for the first year. What we're hoping is, is that we're gonna be able to, after we transition some of our billing and some of our other operating costs from us to HRSD, and we get part of our phase-two transfers to get a remote re-water view for that town, that's gonna save the decline. And to be cliche, time is money. So I'm hoping that we'll get a recruit that fifty in operations over the next year, and then we won't need to use the reserves, and we'll be able to keep this dramatic reduction.
But if, if we're supplementing with reserves this year, how does that affect next year? Does that mean if we aren't able to recover those funds, then we would have to increase the rates even more?
Well, in that way, yes, but what we're also looking at is HRSD at that point would be doing our billing, they'd be doing our collections, they'd be doing that. I'm hoping that at some point, we'd be able to restructure our operations to reduce it from the water rates. And, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to balance the budget. So, yes, if we lose the cost of four fifty-five down, that's gonna allow that. The other thing that we could do, and this is what I'm also hoping to find, are increase the volume in our system. So the more volume we have in our system, it dilutes this amount of water.
But that's a lot that you're not gonna achieve quickly. But when you're talking about reducing costs, you're essentially talking about reducing personnel.
Not necessarily, but there might be a reallocation of personnel if their time isn't used to do water-related tasks. We pay them out of the, I pay them out of the, um, other, the government fund.
I just have real concerns about using reserve lower. How it will affect the future of things.
Using a lot of reserves for a lot.
In response to that, some of our reserve, those are rates were, were higher. They, they come from, from wars or, yeah. Yeah, so that we're giving people back what.
You're charging them in other words.
Right. It's not a reserve, it's just, yeah.
Actually, we did.
Yes, yes.
And this is only fair.
Yeah, because when we first got, when we first got, put the, put the, put the new plan in, we raised the rates almost immediately, even though the plan. Like, a lot of money, a lot, and, you know, but then we had to use, it's been all over the place, but we are, I don't know.
It's a fair trade.
So, and I understand you.
I, I understand your, yeah, I, I'm worried about, you know, Mike might have to take it.
A Robin Peter, pay Paul here.
Not really robbing, because what, we're, we're not robbing Peter at all. We're, we're paying him back for what we robbed him.
So we may have to rob somebody else in the future.
Can I ask one question? Yes, it's, on, on the, uh, thing on page thirty-eight, it says, beginning story, remote, remote. remote. I thought that was gonna be HRSD doing that.
It is.
I guess.
It is. They're doing it, they're also-
It says budget highlights. And I wanted to be sure that we're not budgeting it.
We are absolutely not. We are absolutely not. Now, in addition to that, they're also gonna be putting in all of the, uh, the sewer tie-ins on Jefferson, which is gonna allow us to pave justice all the way up to Jefferson. That's gonna be a little trickier because their project ends right about where that last house, they're going from justice up and around. So, but thankfully, this, well, we, we are, because I'm talking with VDOT about the fact that the stormwater management on Holly is so wretched that we've got new waterfront property over there. They are, we are probably gonna have to make a formal request that they do that on behalf of the town. So then the only town section that we would have to repay is between on Jefferson, between Holly and the, the third housing. And that is a very manageable town project given our budget.
That's what the, yeah. Okay, to be clear, our residents will see a forty percent reduction in sewage, and there will be no thirty percent increase in water. Am I correct?
I'm talking about the net dollars. I'm not gonna go to the, because everybody's different. The whole stock is changing. But they, they, but they, low end users and very high end substantial decreases in their bill. And the middle, you've gotta be about break-even.
That's, but that was the map that we were explaining last meeting.
The map I was explaining last weekend, last meeting was about the, the property tax.
But this thing-
Is, is everybody having any problems with something?
Well, we're also doing another budget workshop in a couple of weeks, so I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Anybody have any problem with the water and sewer part right now? We've kinda discussed that, are they happy with that? We're taking, we're gonna take reserves about like that. All right.
One other question to follow up on yours, Cindy. Is the, is the reserve that you're assigning here, reserve that came from water?
Once, once the, once the dedicated reserves are covered, we have, the financial policy that we put in last year has three components for reserves. Once those are met, then it becomes a general reserve for the, for the town. Because council hasn't designated any use of those reserves, I'm calling that, I'm calling those unappropriated reserves. So currently, we have about one point eight million dollars in reserves that are for capital, for utilities, for-
I'm talking about reserves.
Then the, then the other unappropriated reserve, we have about a million dollars. We're using that million dollars for this fifty grand. And we've got, you know, and we're gonna use the hundred thousand for the town plan, and that's the master plan. But that still leaves us about a million dollars. And because of the timing of the billing for HRSD, we're gonna be able to replace that and then some. So this is the year to use the reserves to help our taxpayers because we're gonna be generating operating reserves from the transfer to HRSD and recruit them.
Didn't quite follow that, but I got the gist.
Real estate question?
Yes.
On the rates, um, you've reduced it from thirty-two cents a hundred to twenty-nine. At the budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, the figure was thirty point two.
Right, and Fletcher, yeah, and Fletcher came in and, and basically asked if we could get that down to twenty-nine. And the way that we did it was because when the folks saw that the Christmas decorations were too high, that was seventy-five hundred dollars, and then we also removed the capital expenditures properly because the, the items that were going to be purchased in the operating budget are gonna, we're gonna wait until we have a town plan to do that because we don't know what we're buying yet. So the combination of those two allowed us to reduce the real estate taxes even more.
Okay.
Every twelve thousand dollars we save, it knocks a penny off, twelve to thirteen thousand dollars, it knocks a penny off our real estate tax.
Okay, thank you, that's just one clear-
Yeah, it's not, it's not like we're making, if, if we raise the rate one cent, it's not like we're making hundreds of thousands of dollars. We only make about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I just wondered why it was different.
Well, we, yeah, we, we, we cut stop and we needed to put it back, you know, we needed to give people a break, so we figured it was lower than, and I, I understand there's other proposals to-
And we took that two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that we were transferred to reserve, we took some of that.
Where are you pitched?
Yeah, in the preliminary budget last night. Also, we take some of that to lower the water.
So we did that.
The fifty thousand issues.
Yeah, eighty thousand.
But I, I understand.
Yeah, there's a, there's another proposal to use-
Well, I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, there's another proposal to use thirty, to take the budget for the town plan down from a hundred to seventy thousand and use that thirty thousand dollars there to bring our net tax increase to zero. We would be able to, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna address Cindy's next question, which is the next right question. What do we do next year? Are we just leaving it alone? But I don't think so. If we save that twenty, twenty-six thousand dollars this year by using the difference in the reserve, the homes that are being built over on carnival grounds are gonna generate that much in new real estate taxes. So we'll use the reserves in year one to help during a high tax year, and in year two, we'll generate them through normal natural growth in town revenue. Makes sense?
If it happens.
We're working very hard to make it happen. The, the tie-ins for the-
I talked to you earlier about that. I mean, it seems like, you know, inflation's affecting us as well, so it, it's, you know, I don't know how, how much the town plan is gonna, you know.
Yeah, we don't know that figure.
Yeah, I, I would have no way to do it until I put it out to bed. I can't do that.
Take another penny off.
When it, when it go to that?
Yeah, well, that, well, that, that's-
You can talk to him.
No, I'm not, there's no reason to talk about that. I think we need to set the real estate rate, and then figure out how much we're gonna need to cover it from the reserves. So if we don't, you know, if we're dropping a number of pennies, we really need half of that amount. So that's, that's, that's a count. We don't have to make that decision tonight, just think about it, yeah. It's, it'll come out the workshop. But, um, I don't, I don't think it's unrealistic that, sorry, you can keep operating the town on the same tax base every year. We're already taking money out of the reserve to, you know, to lower the water bill, and we keep doing that, that's not, that's not a long-term, it's not sustainable. No. Uh, so, yeah, we are spending more, more money, you know, in, in our budget, but a lot of that is, is, you know, is like Matt pointed out, it's like the, the police cars are showing up on our budget, what, sixty thousand dollars?
Forty-eight, forty-nine for the police car. The way that you have to budget it is-
The whole amount.
You have to budget for the whole amount, even though the payment is only thirty-two hundred dollars a year.
That, that looks like we're increasing our budget by that amount, but really not. But, you know, there, there's something-
There's leeway there?
Not leeway, no, it's just that it makes our budget look, everybody says, oh, your budget went up a percent from last year. Well, some of that was sixty thousand, that was, was police cars, they're not paying, we're paying over a five-year period, so it should go into each budget as it goes on, and that payment's only, you know, a lot less than that. So it's just the way accounting does for municipalities, so it's not a true ten percent increase in budget.
I think this year operationally, we got ourselves the right size. We've got the right number of people, and it's down quite a few from when we had HRSD or before we had HRSD at the plant. So we're able to shift people around, and I think that's why I put in the budget workshop that, that, um, hierarchy of staffing, because I think that's, that's the way it's gonna look for a while. You know, so we're right-sized, we've got the right people doing the right jobs, and everything seems to be good. So we didn't need to, um, have any operational increases in expenditures this year. And that's why we're able, in my opinion, to, to break even on the number of tax dollars that we need. So, and even reduce in some places.
Okay, so when we do the budget workshop coming up, we can also look at the master plan as an opportunity to, to do some more, um, make some more changes.
I don't know what you're gonna be on that one.
Well, this is what I've just asked you about.
Well, the master plan's gonna have to go up for the business to accommodate.
Well, no, well, the master plan, the bid doesn't have to be as high as we, or, or the offer doesn't have to be as high as we originally said, so that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we could always, if we get the, if we got, if we put it out for bid and blind bid at this size and people came back with it, we can always say, look, we've only got this much, what do you need to trim off to bring it down to a level that we're comfortable with?
Or put it out to bid at a lower number, that's all.
Shouldn't we first price what they normally are before we predetermine what they're gonna spend?
This is, this is all up in the air because we don't know what we're doing with this yet, and not at all.
We're not gonna go, we're not gonna know and kind of do the budget. So we need to set a, a, a real estate and then worry about, you know, if you're taking money away from master plan, you need, you need to set the real estate rate, and then we need to, whatever we have left, you know, you need to decide between now and the fourth session. We're not gonna be able to get any information on, on how much your master plan's gonna cost between now and two weeks, you know.
Also, it's, it's, you know, you paid for this master plan over two years.
Yeah, true. Well, that's, it's coming out of-
Good idea.
Yeah, you're right.
I like that idea.
So let's, 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 let's sweep off the, the, yeah. So any, the other bucket, what the other was employee compensation, that was the other issue we still had to come up with, you know.
I, I presented to you the models that everybody had requested. And I, I balanced this budget with the most costly of those revised scenarios. So at this point, unless you do something higher, we can always come back.
I have a couple of comments about the compensation, not in terms of-
Yeah, let me make some numbers about, let me make a couple of comments about the, uh, compensation. I talked to a couple of town managers, I talked to one today, and I called another one, and, uh, the, uh, we're a policy board here. It's like we're the CEOs, and, well, not the CEO, we're, you know, so we should make policy decisions. And to me, you know, weighing in on individual salary of employees, it's not our purview.
It should be in personnel-
No, it's not, it's not in our purview anywhere. In any of the towns I've talked to, the town manager, you know, pays employees, and he comes up with a budget, and we can look at the budget, and, and in some towns, they don't even list, it's public knowledge, but he comes up with a budget, we, you know, set his salary in the place chief, everybody else works for him, he comes up with a budget, we should, we should weigh in on what the cost of living change should be. That's the policy to me. We should possibly, and if we are upset about him giving rate, we can weigh in on a policy decision that you can't give anybody more than a twenty percent raise or something like that. But to weigh in on each individual, none of us know what they do, really.
Well, we should. And the personnel should know what-
The CEO board doesn't know what the guy on the separate plan is doing.
It's not true, it's not true, you're a policy, it's not your decision to do that.
You look at BMLs, it handles everything. So, I mean, I'm just saying, that's, you know, that, that's how the county manager system should be working. That's how BMLs should be working. So I don't have any problem setting policy about wages across the board.
Because the personnel department of the, of Ford Company advises the CEOs, and so, so there is a personnel department-
But they, but they don't go to-
Putting those things together.
They give a budget to the board, correct? Well, we, we're not even, well, there's, there's a bunch of things floating around in general, you know, we're not even allowed to discuss individual people that don't work for us in closed session because they don't, they don't work for us. So, um, my point is that let's worry about the, you know, the percentage that we should be given. Plus, we don't wanna be talking about individual employees in an open meeting, and we can't legally talk about them in closed session, so.
I agree, we should set the percentage.
Yes, that's, that's what I would like to do.
Buy BML code.
Yeah, well, there's no BML code.
There is, yes, sir, is that good?
They're state code, but not, not necessarily.
Then we can discuss who is under council direct.
No, no, it's not true. The town manager, place chief, and our attorney. Those three people, we set their salary, and I have no problem going in closed session talking about their salary, but-
However, in the personnel committee, which Cindy and I are serving on, we are setting pay pay.
That's, that's a different, that's a policy.
Yes.
I think we should be doing that. And that, that's my point. We shouldn't, we should set policy, not specific, you know, form, you know, things for specific employees. We, we set a budget, he's gonna work with the budget, it's not like he's gonna transfer, you know, half the salary from one person and, you know, he's got a budget, so that's, that's my, that's not enough.
But we have before us three proposals.
Yeah, right, so we need, yeah, we need to decide on-
Proposal that Matt originally gave us.
Right.
We have a five percent plus board base, and we have a seven point five percent.
You wanna talk about that now or you wanna wait till the budget workshop?
We can go in an hour and twenty minutes.
Yeah, well, that's, we, we can, yeah, everybody's had a chance to look at that, so I think we just have to decide what percentage we want and who's on where. I think that's our policy. Anything else on the, we have another chance to get on this? All right, anybody, uh, we're gonna have a public hearing in May on the, the public hearing in April budget.
Yeah. April, April, the regular meeting in April will include the budget hearing for public.
All right.
No, that's the, we're gonna be in April twentieth. We'll have the budget, the budget public hearing in April.
Right, and it gives you enough time to get that public hearing, anything about that for our work session?
Yeah, I'll put it right in the paper that Friday to announce it. So I'm gonna announce the public hearing for the twenty-fifth because that's where it has to get done, because you guys have to adopt the budget in May. So, you know, I mean, that, that's, that's gonna happen. It's just what gets talked about on the twenty-fifth.
May twenty-third.
Yes.
All right, public comment about anything else we haven't talked about? Um, okay, we have, uh, I don't know. Don, don't rip your shirt here on-
I'm briefly going, um, yeah, I'd like to speak to the, I'd like to speak to the assessments. And I think there's an issue that while all of us have been hit with these assessments and, and most of us are feeling very clean, there's also a bigger fairness issue. And what I'm referring to is that we live in this piece of property right here. So our, our house borders on counties on both, on two sides. My assessment went up twenty-six percent. My next-door neighbor's assessment went up one percent. The neighbors across the creek went up between one and five percent. So obviously, what's happening is that the county assessor has, has right behind O'Nancock and is stocking it to the residents of O'Nancock. And it's not just my little corner of the world, I can also speak to the other side of town, where the beautiful homes along the north branch of the O'Nancock Creek, Coatesbury, and those beautiful homes, so one and two percent taxes. Wyandotte Council, or Sue Knox House, got almost twenty-five percent. She looks at those houses, they got two percent, as I do, she'll look at the house, it got one percent. I feel that it's incumbent upon the town council to hold the county accountable for the discrepancies that were seen. I think the county should be called to account for why there is a line, an imaginary line that once you cross it, your taxes are gone. And I don't mind paying my taxes.
No, you're, I know.
But, and I will obviously feel my taxes. But this is an egregious difference between being in O'Nancock and being in the county. I can tell you that Sixty Hill Street, there's a little house farmhouse on, in the middle of the farm over here. His taxes went up, let's see, over here, full place, uh, let's see, his taxes went up thirty-one point eight percent. Across the street, Sixty-one Hill Street, went up three percent. There's something rotten in our tax assessment system. And we're, the townspeople of O'Nancock are getting the shit compared to the rest of the county. If you go down toward the country club, Glennheim, lovely home, two or three percent. If you go to Attam, if you go to Backstreet, there are actually houses whose tax assessment went down. Where is the fairness in this system? And I think it's incumbent upon the town council to hold the county accountable. I don't know if we have a public meeting with the county here to represent and meet the residents of O'Nancock and answer our question, but it's, it's obvious to me that we need some answers.
The, the assessor, have you talked with, I mean, assessor is the one that makes the, the county commissioners don't do the assessment.
Correct.
They, they, they hire, they hire assessor. Assessor, so can we get up with them tomorrow and find out what, what-
What that rationale was.
What the rationale is, the first I've heard about this.
Speech is-
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, thank you.
I talked to the assessor, and he basically said it was unfair, he agreed. So didn't he board a supervisor, no, they say it was unfair, and they agreed. But their thinking is, real estate prices in O'Nancock and Caplan's boat and shipping have increased, therefore we, they're basing it on what our house values. I don't agree with that. And they agreed that it was unfair, but they're still wanna do it to us.
But what they're doing is they're looking at where the most real estate sales are, and obviously, that's gonna be the concentrated area. That doesn't mean that the house down in Glennheim by the country club hasn't appreciated in value as well. And when it sells, will sell at a much higher rate than the assessed at.
Exactly.
Is there any way we can, as a town, we can appeal the whole assessment?
Let's talk to my, yeah.
Because as an individual, you could appeal.
Oh, yeah, but that's, yeah, but you can only do that.
The other option is, let's give everybody in O'Nancock a full call.
Well, countywide, it went up 9.1%. And I say, you can't expect us to believe that there aren't houses in the county that wouldn't assess with, or aren't worth the same value as our house.
Well, right across the creek from Sarah. Those beautiful homes along O'Nancock Creek, they have deep water docks. I can't even launch a kayak and blow tide in O'Nancock.
I hear you. All right, well, thank you very much, we're very like-minded. Anybody else on the tax thing? Okay, go ahead, Tony? If you wanna talk.
I do, but Kathy got up.
Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a couple of positive comments to start with. Thanks to the town for beautiful spring gardens, and it really looks great. I'm appreciative, and I think we all are, of the daffodils and around the entrance sign. Also, the parade was a big success, the St. Hackensack Parade. And so that is a good thing for our town. And finally, in the positive corner is Main Street's achievements. I just not only heard at council the report of the goals they met, but also their goals for this year. And, but I got an email, and I really appreciate that somebody's working for our town and putting things forward. So that, that's the positive part. My next part is a deep concern about the, uh, okay, now I'm losing my words, the gravel operation. Chaney Enterprises down at the dock at War, which is zoned as BW, so Business War, and Waterfront, sorry, Business Waterfront. They are expanding their operation, it appears, to be a grain transport area. And this is deeply concerning to me for two reasons. What's happening right now, and what that will mean for our town right now, and then for the future, and what we need to do perhaps about the zoning regulations. The BW zoning is quite loose, so they allow lots of things. There's one section in the statement of intent that says certain limitations may be imposed to protect residential desirability of adjacent neighborhoods and enhance the town's vital water resources. A grain transfer operation is a noisy, dirty, dusty business. And from Chaney's information that I heard today, they're hoping to do 10 to 15 barges a week, a year. So if we say 12 barges a year, that would be one a month. And each barge would hold 60 tractor-trailer loads. So it means not only do we have a dirty, dusty operation, but we have 60 travels of tractor-trailers through our town. And we put up with dump trucks because we're used to it, and that gravel operation has been here forever. But it's always a safety concern, and it's a concern for people shopping along Main Street, have trucks rumbling by. Now, can you imagine 18-wheelers, 60 a month, coming up and down our Market Street? So I'm here to say that I would like to see everything done possibly that we could do as a town, which seems not very much, but to convince Chaney that this is a, not a good move for them. They are gonna be transferring grain from Parksley to Chesapeake. And, you know, Chaney doesn't have any, as far as I know, none of us here in the town are working for Chaney, you know, there's no, they're here to make money. And I think it gravely affects our town. And to be upfront, I live down there. Our property goes from Market Street back to King Street. And so we're right across from it. In fact, we were the ones that noticed that something was up over there. And my husband went over and started checking things out. But think of the things that are gonna be affected. Mallards, our beautiful marina with all its improvements, and the work that's been done about recruiting boating clubs and stuff to come down. Now we have a dusty, dirty, noisy grain operation. I don't see how that benefits the town. And certainly for the future, you know, we talk about a town plan. I mean, do we wanna be an industrial town? Was this our, our goal? I, I personally don't wanna see that. I don't know, perhaps other people do. So anyway, I'm here to express this deep concern, and I hope you folks will talk about it. Thanks.
I think, yeah, we talked about the same thing.
Same thing she worked.
I had a couple of other things.
Thank you, Kathy, for that. Chris Solomon, 21 more. Thank you for bringing that up. As it is, we had a fabulous parade, and I was delighted with everything about it. We had every kind of animal truck, whatever, it was put, and a lot of work. So thanks to everybody who worked on that. Now, the thought of 60 tractor-trailers going by Lenheim is something I never thought would happen. However, I guess it's gonna happen, or could happen, or might happen. I urge you, please, that if there is any way we can convince the company to change its mode of operations, we do that. If there are any meetings that I would need to attend or help with, I'd be happy to do it. I've been in tons of traffic already on the street. And I would be happy when changed over the operation, trucks seem a little nicer than those we've had before. However, 60 tractor-trailers doesn't do anything for the lifestyle that we're trying to maintain here in O'Nancock. So anything we can do about that would be very helpful. I urge you, please, work, work towards that. One other thing I wanted to ask about was the, the water tower. I know that it's been cleaned and refreshed, and I, are we now using the water? It's filled, January 10th, we got an email and said they were, in the next couple of weeks, that would happen. So did we get an annual drinking water report?
It's online.
Where it is?
Yeah, it's on the website. I can send you the link.
For 20, because I pulled up the one for 2019?
Yeah, I can send.
And for 2020?
I can send you the, no problem.
Okay, so there was one?
Okay.
After the town was refilled?
Yeah, we have to get the annual permit. And then when the tower was refilled, we do a back T test on, to make sure the Department of Health reviews it three times before we actually put the tower in use.
So all that was done?
Department of Health drives that train, and they do it very carefully.
Okay, great. So then, you'll send me a link?
Yeah.
For the annual water quality report? And Matt, could I ask, I just brought up the page on the website. Could the newer ones be added on the website?
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. And the third thing I wanted to bring up is, and I talked to Officer Sue Burge about this. She, Sue Burge is with Animal Control. And there are, seems to be a number of new cats who have arrived in O'Nancock. They are not neutered. I don't, they're, they're not kittens either. They're adult cats. I don't know how they got here. I don't know them, and I know some personally, believe me. But all of a sudden, we've got additional adult males. And I think someone is trapping them and bringing them to town because they're restaurants, and they figured they'll find food. I've seen people, a tractor supply, buying traps. And when I asked, what is it, you know, do you have squirrels? What do we have? I, I didn't get an answer. Then they were overbuying cat food, and the cats out. Hello, something is bringing these animals. See, I've been here for a couple of years, and these are new creatures I've never seen before. I don't think they're running with. So if you do see anyone stopping their car and letting something fly out, please get their license number because it is against the law. Thank you. I think that's all for now.
Isn't there a comment on the gravel operation, possible rain operation? Tell me now.
Good evening. I'm here first as director of the school to thank Chief Williams and the town managers for responding to an email I sent a week ago Sunday after, so the, the school was vandalized. Several windows were popped in, and it was really pretty upsetting to the studio owners and myself. Thank you for your immediate response. Thank you for your resumed tours around the school multiple times a day and at night and the spotlights. This is from me, and this is from many of the studio lecys. So we appreciate the, I know the pandemic and the lack of officers slowed that down a lot, but thank you for getting back on track. We really do appreciate it. Secondly, as Joan Donahoe's citizen, thank you very much for your immediate response also about the dog. I was personally affronted by that dog. It's scary as hell. And, you know, even if a conversation with this person to see if they would willingly, you know, give their dog up for you, you upset. Okay, just, just saying, just wondering if there was a window there to say, hey, this is gonna be easier on you if you let us, some of the animal control, look at your dog.
We try.
All right. On a fun note, a bunch of my neighbors and I decided that O'Nancock needs to be a little party. So instead of having it in one of our yards, we decided it would be fun as personal residents of O'Nancock to have it at the school. So my, Sunday, May 1st, there's going to be a party, and I invite everybody in the town of O'Nancock and RFD. I would love to be able to share this, have the town share it on the website, please. Our thought also is because, if I'm not mistaken, 44 houses, they have turned over hands in the past two years. This is for us to meet new people, for them to meet us. Everybody's been in their house, and this is gonna be an outdoor event. We're gonna have food trucks, we're going to have bounce houses for the kids. The disc golf courses are going to be open, and we're gonna have the Eastern Shore Disc Golf Club show everybody how to play. We're gonna give away frisbees. It's a bring your own blanket, table, chair, and beverages, so we don't have to deal with beverages. We just bring the food and the fun, and we hope everybody will join in. It's going out on Facebook, it's going out in posters and flyers, and I hope you all share it. Come, reappoint yourself with your neighbors and meet new neighbors. And it's from, I didn't say the time, it's 1 till 4 on Sunday, May 1st, rain or shine. We're looking for any help, a couple extra tents, cornhole, anything for fun. I forgot, our resident Johnny Mo is going to be the DJ, so we also have music. So thank him for his help with cutting that bill a little bit. So all good? You'll see posters? Come, have fun, enjoy, bring a friend.
Hi, everybody, I'm Becky G. I am Margie with Northern Actaback Community Cats.
There you go.
Yes, yes. I was here in July and let you know about our program. And I have to say, our fiscal year just ended. Our first year, we only spanned around 149 cats. Our fiscal year just ended, end of February, and we have done 407 cats. We have rescued 16 kittens. They got placed into rescues. We're not a rescue, but if we're working with a colony with a caregiver, we will take those kittens, get them into rescue. 150 referrals to people outside of our territory. Of those 407 cats that we've banned neuter, 220 were females. So if you take 220 females, times four letters a year, we just saved over 4,000 kittens from being born. In, in O'Nancock, 54 cats, we've done 54 cats here in O'Nancock, we have 67 cats on a waiting list to be done. So as of now, so 600 less kittens were born here in O'Nancock this, this past year. 600 less kittens in O'Nancock alone. So we have, in our budget, we don't really have a budget, we pray, people donate. So for O'Nancock, we have paid over $4,600 to ban neuter cats in O'Nancock. With 67 being on our list, we have about another $6,000. Right now, Becca and I raise all this money on our own. We don't get grants, we do fundraisers, we do gift card raffles. Thank you, O'Nancock businesses, Mallards, Guinness Cafe, the Blarney Stone Pub, Corner Bakery, Dawn Specialty for donating gift cards for our raffle. We raised some money. But what we're asking is, the ladies in the churches love to bake. Let's have a bake sale, let's raise some money. Because we have, like I said, we have, we have a lot of cats that need done. The benefits of why you need to get these cats banned neuter, because I just told you, more cats are coming around again, and it'll stop this overpopulation. If you do see someone talking off cats, please listen what she says, and get their plate number, and report that to Corporal Sue Burge at the Animal Control, because they don't tolerate that at all. Because it's recall relocation, and that's not a good thing. Besides, less kittens is gonna reduce the noise, it's gonna reduce the fighting, and it's gonna reduce the spraying. Cats, so this ban neuter will stop that, and it will stop other cats from moving into the territory. So why should you support TNR? It is the only, only effective method to stop this community cat overpopulation. We need to stop this, we all need to work together to get this accomplished. So what we're asking, if the town will help us by donating money to help us with your cats in O'Nancock. What Becca and I have discussed is, you could say, well, I'll donate money, but how do I know it's gonna go toward my cats in O'Nancock? So what Becca and I are gonna do is, for each town that donates money to our program, that money will only be allotted to your town cats. We will have a starting balance, how many cats we've done. We will not give you names of the people, and we will not give you the addresses. Especially, that's just something, we don't give out personal information like that. And you don't give out where the cats are located at. That's dangerous. So, but we will send you a statement every three months to let you know, this is what you've donated, this is how many cats we've done, and this is what the balance is remaining. We will do that for each and every town. That way, say, an O'Nancock donates a lot of money, but the other town can't donate as much, we're not gonna take the money that you donated, donated for another town. It will only be used for your town, your town cats.
What's your definition of town? People actually with corporate limits or people in Zico?
People that say that their address is such and such, O'Nancock.
Well, that's a lot of, that's a big zip code there.
I don't know what your area is, I mean, we just go by when people say what county they're in, and they tell us whatever, address is such and such, O'Nancock.
The second question is, if I just have a house cat, and I've never had it spayed or neutered, and I come to you, will you do that?
We only do outside cats. We do not do inside cats.
If, if, and feral cats, if you travel, that's, well...
We only do fair, we only do outside cats. We don't do any inside cats.
Okay.
The program is for outside cats. That's where the overpopulation lies, is with the outside cats.
But if you have an owner that owns the cat, and just lets it go out all the time, and they haven't had it spayed or neutered, you come, you will spay and neuter it for them?
We prefer they take care of the situation themselves, but we will do that. But they won't get the big discount like everybody else has. Yes, yes.
It's not like you're going to come in contact with that cat, that cat's going home.
Yes. Yes, 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 yes.
No, I, I guess that my concern is that you're, you know, that if we're going to give them money, we'd be interested in giving money, even though you're, you're working for the town in Hancock and not people that are down at, you know, at these points and places.
I don't, I don't know where, I don't.
Start in our parking lot.
And, you know, I know ever since we had that meeting, even people from a Hancock have gotten in touch with us. So, you know, we've done fifty-some cats.
Yeah, well, they probably, they probably.
So, yeah, I mean, we're working on it, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a cure, it's not going to be, uh, a couple of years down the road. This is going to take a long time. It's going to take the town, the residents, working all together. Something that we're talking about doing is, is we've had the Virginia Beach SPCA meter scooter, the bus. We've had them come to blocks of three times. We would be interested, you would be interested in us, us bringing the meter scooter to a Hancock. People can see, your residents can see that the town council is taking this seriously. And they see this big meter scooter bus and they see all these cats getting done. So it's a win-win situation. The only thing we request is the, the bus has to have enough to be, that it can turn, needs turning and it'll need to park. But what we do is, is we trap our cats the night before. We like to assess our cats, we just don't, you know, hand them off to somebody. We, we check to see, do they have any wounds that need addressed? So we check out our cat, we just don't scan them, we like to make sure that they're going to be okay to go back out there. So what we would need would be a building that we could house the cats in. We put down tarps, we do all that stuff ourselves, you know, we, we clean up after ourselves. They would need to be in a building overnight, safe, secure area where nobody can get to them. And you don't make it public to people, as you know how people can be sometimes, they know all these cats are, so we don't make it public. And they will be housed there overnight and the meter scooter bus will come up in the morning and park right there. And then we take the cats straight to the building, straight to the meter scooter bus. They get done, they come back out and the people will come and pick them up. So if you would be interested in that, um, lots of, our department, that's a huge building. We put down tarps and stuff beforehand, the cats came, after the cats were done, we take care of cleaning everything up. So it looks better, it'll look better than we had before. So we're there, we're very thorough with that. So that's something to think about and just, you know, just let us know, keep in contact with us. You know, we're here to help you, we're here to help the residents and here to help the cats.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question. Have you observed things like what Priscilla was describing with people bringing cats to places?
I haven't observed, I haven't observed it myself, I've heard stories. But then I can tell people is if you see it, you need to get a licensed plate number. And then let Corporal Sue now, uh, Animal Control. Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment?
One, one, very quick, very quick. My name's, my name's Bill McCarty, I live on Kerr Street. And, uh, I know that the town has been involved in trying to put in a bike trail, walking trail, out of both ways. And I'm here just to encourage the, the town and the council to look strongly at this. I've been interested in it for a few years. Now with the rails to trail coming in, this could be a real advantage for Hancock. We could, you guys could advertise, you bring your yacht in, you rent a bike, you can go up and ride wherever you want to go on the shore. People on the trail can come off and they can go to our restaurants, they can stay in our hotels and B and Bs. That would be a significant advantage. The, uh, for, for residents, I became interested in this two or three years ago when someone was talking about moving to a place where they had easy pedestrian access to shopping and all of those different things. And it occurred to me, oh, man, uh, absence of a path that described us to a tish. Um, and you guys have been very patient tonight, I'm always done, I won't be long there. But the rails to trails, that gets magnified. And one of the things, we are part of a larger county community. For the rails to trails to succeed, you can't just put in the path and expect people to come and ride and see nothing. If you do any research, you'll find that it takes community buy-in. And communities like an Hancock stepping, stepping up and doing things to attract people to utilize this facility. It is good for us, it is good for the county. We can be a leader in that and I just want to encourage the town to do everything we possibly can, explore all the avenues. We've got a poor line of road that leads out there. To do everything we possibly can to make this happen. I know that the trail as it goes through only, we can't do any part of that. But we can do our part and we can reach as close as we can, okay? Thank you, thank you very much.
As far as I know, we're already, there's already a, you know, the road diet coming to do bike lanes on the side.
I, I understand.
Person here, is that still in the works? The Commonwealth Press Station represented sitting in the back here.
Yes, if my name is Steve Johnson, it, it, it's in the six-year plan, it's been approved, I can't tell you exactly what year Priscilla's done. But, uh, there's another program that the town can utilize, that's called transportation alternatives. The average plan, the average program for that, uh, is between a million and a million five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, is for transportation related projects. And short rails to trail programs fit that particular mode. This, the funds come from the federal government and the state. The state allows them to make that and every two years, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, uh, allocates those funds. There are, this year, uh, there were a hundred and twenty-one projects around the state. And there's a total of approximately fifty million dollars that was put into those projects that were selected um, throughout the state, a number of rural areas. There are also some areas in suburban areas that also have gotten transportation alternative out of funding. So that's, that's a vehicle which could be available to the town.
Thank you.
I'm happy.
Any other public comment?
Just wanted to know what the status was of our police department and the new hires.
He's sitting right there?
Yes.
We got, uh, four additions built and tomorrow we're actually having another heavy protest, so it's looking good.
Great.
We didn't hear.
We've got four still and tomorrow we're going to have.
Four builds tomorrow in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Um, yes, please, if you don't mind, just to comment real quick because it made me think about this. Um, if, if we're looking at the road diet at Road. And in fact, I know y'all are going to look into this, but in fact, we are going to have sixty a month tractor trailer trucks coming in, that's seven a day, twice, that's fourteen times that you're going to be on that road diet, on your bike beside, tractor trailer. So if this really is, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what y'all find out about this and all the facts and and because of that will impact how you feel about bike riding down that road.
Uh, any other public comment about that?
Uh, Matt, you're, Phil said about what you found out about the Cheney.
Sure, I sent, I sent council an email earlier on Friday, Steve Boyd, I know that Kathy's right there. Steve approached me and, um, this morning, I called the Cheney operation and only asked if they would confirm or deny whether or not this was actually happening. Tammy and Cheney and only had no idea of any of this. I asked her if she'd look into it for me and then a fellow by the name of Kyle from Cheney called me back and said that there is no deal inked, as it were, um, but they are talking about, uh, sending out basically Kathy was right, twelve barge of the year. He actually didn't know how many truckloads it took to fill a barge. I asked the question because the next call I made was to VDOT was to find out if there's any restrictions or allowances or limitations that we can have for the size of vehicles, the number of vehicles that access that part. In addition to that, I, I told him that the, you know, the lighting, the asphalt quality, there's no place to walk. The stormwater retention down there is just in terrible shape, so more trucks are going to do more damage and that's not okay. Their, VDOT got back to me and said they were going to look into it. Um, I also looked at our, our BW ordinance, um, and sent that off to, I looked at the definition for what they allow and it's what we allow. And that is, um, waterborne commerce, which basically says anything over the water that uses a vessel over the waters is permissible. Um, the sentence that Kathy pointed out does give us a foothold and I've sent all of that from the information from VDOT, the information from Cheney, the information from our, uh, from my research off to our town attorney to ask where what our possible recourse is can be. I mean, we want to remain good neighbors with Cheney, but at the same time, we need to protect our town. So that's all in the works.
We want to be good neighbors to them, but we want them to be good neighbors to us as well.
We want to write them a letter saying that we're concerned about this, we're pretty sure it's like, we'd like to, you know, sit down and.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking again with them in the morning.
Yeah, so I think you'd be on record.
Yeah, I mean, he was very surprised to hear that Purdue people were talking in town because like they say, they were exploratory, they didn't even have. But he also said pretty clearly when he met with us and when he met with the community group that they did say that one of their goals is to increase the use of that, of that war. So this is one way, I, I guess we all assumed that would be additional rattle. Um, when I never, this never popped into my head. Um, so we're, we're talking again in the morning and I'll let it happen, but we've, we've engaged our town attorney and we're, we're also talking with VDOT pretty aggressively about what can happen.
Yeah, I mean, I got, I mean, like, the, the sixty, sixty of trucks, but that's only two a day.
Well, three if you count, if you count by weekdays.
Yeah, but so, yeah, so, but then, are they all coming in a, in a three-day period to load the barge?
I know, that's the part where, we don't know the operation.
How is the store down there? We talked about this earlier, you know, I did.
Right, and the other thing is they, you know, there, there was also a rumor that they're, they would be putting up a, a building to shield the grain. Um, and Cheney said, you know, we're not building anybody a building. So there's, I mean, I think they're still in conversations with, with Purdue. Um, but we're, we're in at the very beginning, thanks to the Boyd's and their information.
HRSD?
No, the, the HRSD report, it's been very busy with them looking at easements, looking at pump stations, um, looking at paving. They're, they're, uh, if you remember, phase one of the agreement has them repaving Jackson Street. Um, they got all their permits from VDOT, looks like they're going to be putting in new sidewalks for Van Street from Market up to Kerr. They're going to grind the first hundred feet and then the rest of it's all going to have six inches of packed, um, crusher run and then two inches of asphalt. So it's going to be incredibly well done. Uh, that's expected to begin before the end of April, so that there's some relief for those folks on Jackson Street. That's been too miserable for too long. Um, the other thing that we've been working on is the design for the Jefferson Street tie-ins where all the carnival grounds houses are going in, that was, um, they got their budget back and they're, they're putting in about eight hundred thousand dollars with the capital workover in those areas. And the town doesn't have to do and we're going to get the future revenue from all of those houses. So that's a real benefit. And once again, they're going to be, um, removing the pavement on Justice and Jefferson, doing it to, um, VDOT standards, which is a lot higher than it currently exists. While it's all torn up, we're going to be quitting a fire hydrant. I talked with Chief James and found out that the stretch between the two hydrants for all those houses is too far for them. They could do it, but he appreciates the fact that I was able to put into our budget the, um, the adding of a fire hydrant in the metal. So while it's all torn up, we'll add that fire hydrant and that will get, um, we'll get water service run out to the dog park where that is. Um, I am going to, in my manager's report, I'm going to ask if the design for the dog park that Mr. Burger put together is acceptable and I can move forward with that plan, but that's not it. Um, so yeah, HRSD, we're, we're moving a lot of things very fast, but there's nothing that hasn't been discussed before, it's just actually happening.
Hey, if I may, on HRSD, just a couple of comments on things that are happening down county and, uh, in North Hampton County. Um, the HRSD board on Tuesday of last week approved the forty-six million dollars for the construction project. And that, that will allow Garni, who is the contractor of record and their, and their engineers, uh, to move forward with the project. We probably start to see, and the, the agreement also, uh, for the pipeline will run up the railroad right away. Uh, and there's no cost coming to, uh, HRSD for utilizing that right away from A and TDC and from Canoni, and if you remember, Canoni actually owns the complete asset, if you will, of the right away. And the final agreement should be concluded almost any day. There, there was a small pickup, um, but that was a legal issue, that's been resolved. And, uh, so I expect that the contractor should start, and it probably started in Melville and come north. Uh, and then eventually go from there south, but it looks like they're going to start there because of the permitting. It's easier because of the existing pipeline to come from Melville north. So that's what's happening generally, big picture issue.
All right, waterfront?
Well, TV is determined.
Certainly going to be glad to address it.
Why I'm on this? Your planning, but.
Basically, we hold a waterfront, Tealingburg Thirty-Eight Eighth Street, uh, the waterfront company. Um, we hold a meeting every second Tuesday, uh, five-thirty right here, anybody interested, we'd love to have you, listen to it, we love ideas. Uh, basically, we talked about everything from the town manager's report, he's done an awful lot from, uh, courtesy cars to what we've done with Dakwa, et cetera, et cetera. Harbor Master Forty is not here, but, uh, he's been down there working, selling a little fuel, getting ready, cleaning. Uh, so we're ready to open April one, we've got a lot of, of parties on the book, we've got some individual transients and we've also got some clubs, we've been talking to new clubs, old clubs. We're trying to get them to start on this side, our side of the bay, as opposed to staying on the western shore, come over for one night and head south to K-Charles or wherever they might, uh, and I think you've come a long, long way, we've got a long way to go, so we're interested in any ideas. Thank you.
You question? Planning mission?
Water, that question, because we, we had talked about, or we talked about a rate increasing and you spoke to that in an email to all of us and I just wanted to thank you for that information because I think it says a lot about how we operate and, and I can get in my mind to a small business and that is a small business entity of the town. And yet, and thinking of it that way, we have to think on, on longer term.
We need to change the rate.
We did not.
We did not. And I appreciate all the comments, uh, the emails, support, very, very kind of you. Uh, we have done a lot, we're hoping to get a lot more boats and clubs on this side and there'll be an opportunity. We know that we, uh, are less money than K-Charles, they've got four times, five times the slips. Uh, believe me, they've got a floating scale, um, so give us this year, let's see where we are and go from there.
The other thing that I would ask is if there's any coordination that the waterfront committee could do in terms of the Cheney grain whole thing to, to shed your insight and.
I've talked to them. Um, we talked to them before the grain panic came up, we talked to them when they first bought the place from the Warner Girls. Um, and they told us what we wanted to hear. I think they changed a few things, tried to do it a little better, at least going in. Uh, I think we need to keep, uh, an eye on, um, I wasn't surprised, I was surprised that it was small grain, that is odd to me, without putting a silo up. Uh, when I was a child, you even had a vacuator that sucked soybeans out of a truck and put it in a boxcar. Uh, the only time you ever put it on the grain ground was at a granary when you were full, wrapped it in plastic, then you immediately put it in silos when you had crumb. Uh, the only time you ever put it on the grain ground was at a granary when you were full, wrapped it in plastic, then you immediately put it in silos when you had rum. So the fact that they're going to bring trailers in and just have some ramp arrangement or something elevator to get it onboard. And then they're going to accept the moisture content from here to, uh, up the Elizabeth River. That's really, really strange to me coming from many, many years ago.
Tealy, um, the crab boats that were now for boards this winter.
Would you say that again, please?
The crab boats or oyster boats.
Yes.
Uh, Jimmy Prue, one, uh, talked to us one day and he's interested in staying year round, but I understand according to the funds we've received, that's, those have to be transient slips, right?
Correct. And, um, I thought it was a great idea, good work. Getting some people in here, getting some sterns and slips for the off-season. We've tried to offer off-season rates, uh, for fishermen, et cetera, but no, we are transient.
That's what I told him. I thought that we could not, that I would check with you.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, we, we met last time, but basically it was to review the fact that we've got a, we're putting together a schedule for the year for what we're going to be talking about. And our next, on the fifth, I believe, is the next meeting, we're going to be looking at, first of all, just some of the definitions and what people that sit on planning commission need to understand about zoning and what we're going to be doing. And then we're looking at, um, in the first month, V one district, the second month, V two district. Then we're looking at subdivisions. So those are the three scheduled topics. They're going to bleed over. And I know that there's one person in the V two district that's going to probably be making written requests to council that we escalate our review of V two for a specific request.
So the planning agreement's a week there, so we get Monday, now Monday, next to February.
That's exactly right.
Uh, personnel?
We did need, uh, we are working on the personnel policies. Uh, we ran into a glitch there in that we have, we have the town personnel policies that we own council have a copy of. And then we have another copy of the personnel policies. So we're trying to merge the two or first we're trying to decide which is the official town personnel policy. And then we're working from that. And then we're going to sort of start all over and take it from there. And create and, and revise from hence.
So when's your next meeting?
April fifth, three thirty.
Exactly, tomorrow. It's April first, first Tuesday of the month at three thirty.
Tomorrow is March.
Tomorrow's March.
This is, this is not February.
We're all right.
One addition to the, uh, committee reports, uh, Main Street. Item about that came up for me, sort of time sensitive.
Yes, this is time sensitive and, uh, Main Street would like to apply for a grant from the Department of, um, Housing and Community Development. It would be a, let me get this right, uh, community business launch grant. The idea is to, um, identify vacant storefronts within the area of the Main Street designated area. Uh, that would be, uh, receptive to working with new entrepreneurs coming in. We would then, the grant would allow Main Street to then recruit those new entrepreneurs to do training with them. And, um, eventually have, once their training was complete, do a shark tank type competition. To identify the winners of this competition. Again, we're trying to create new business entrepreneurs in town. They would be limited to the town. They would commit to being in some of our vacant business buildings that we have now. A cash match would be used for prizes for those winners of the competition. To assist them in beginning their new business. Um, the total grant amount would be forty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars. And that requires a twenty thousand dollar cash match to apply. So that's, um, Main Street's request. I think Janet is here. If you have any questions. Yeah, my, my, my little expertise, Janet can certainly respond.
There's something you, you talked about before, you guys, when they're, when they're planning, it's not something that came up yesterday.
No, this is, this is one of our goals. Yeah, yes. Incubator. And I didn't understand when you were talking just now, maybe I just didn't hear it right. It's limited to a NACU business, people or businesses or people who want, I mean, I'm just saying if somebody at home, it wants to start a business, but could they apply to this?
If they want to start in an Anco.
Right, the business.
Is it downtown in Anco? Okay, that's, that's, I think was the question. It's the downtown district, not all of Anco.
Right, just the.
I believe that runs from the church down to.
That's where our vacant buildings are.
Car place, the school, all the way to the wall.
Yeah.
And the prizes are, uh, um, uh, advertising and promotion, new signage. Uh, you need point of sale equipment. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's startup money.
Have you, have you recruited any of the vacant building owners to, to buy in?
We've got two. I can't say who, but we have two already. We need to create, uh, three, at least three new businesses and at least five new full-time jobs in the town who are qualified for this. And Main Street, in addition to the twenty thousand cash match, will have to also match, uh, twelve thousand five hundred in in-kind matches. So that would also, like for instance, if somebody would have charged a thousand dollars for their rent and they agree to cut it by half, you know, then we've got six thousand dollars towards that cash match because that would be the value of that. All of our volunteer times is in-kind match. Um, but we need twenty thousand in cash in order to get the sixty-five thousand to do this.
And you're applying for a grant.
It's a grant.
And the grant requires the twenty thousand in order to, to qualify for the grant.
Correct.
And are any of these vacant building owners willing to put up part of that, those funds so that their buildings would be utilized?
We, we, we haven't asked that of them. We, we knew that, um, that the town had set aside, um, a good deal of money for grant matching. And of course, you're not handing us this until we get the grant. If we have, you know, you're not obligated to it unless we get the grant. We would just have a.
Get the grant unless you have the obligation from the town, is that right?
Correct, correct. And that's why we're here. And the deadline is, uh, I think like the twentieth of April. We've been working on this plan since last September. Uh, but we're now asking for the.
Do you know the date of the grant award?
I believe we'll hear in June. We need to have, uh, the entire thing in place by the end of the year.
Yeah, so there is, there is in the current year budget, um, money set aside for grant matching. We, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for matching. We haven't needed to use anywhere close to that, but we do not have that same set aside in the twenty twenty-three budget. So if this whole thing happens prior to, it's already budgeted. We're fine with that. After July one, we're going to have to back up a little bit.
Is this through DHCD?
It's DHCD, um, and Virginia Main Street. And so, and the program would then mean that the shark tank is probably happening next spring. And then we're getting done. So this isn't like, you know, tomorrow. This is a process. And the, the coursework is to ensure that, that these people have good business plans, that they, you know, learn how to have successful businesses. We want them to be successful.
It's a one-time match grant, twenty thousand, is it?
Correct.
Right, you do.
Yeah, it was sort of like the actual property, I mean, property owner.
But there's a, there's a race period there.
Yeah, generally you're working out something that, hey, would you, you know, how much of a break can we work out here? How much could you, you know, if, if you've been having, I mean, look at the empty buildings. You know, these people want them filled. Um, most of them want themselves. And, um, so, you know, if they're willing to work with us, then, and, or they may not. They may say, yeah, bring them in, but then the winner uh, is getting that, that cash prize. And, you know, that's all they get. So we don't have to get a deal from the business owner in other words. We just know we have two that will.
PR for the town too. It's a fun.
Oh, it's a big, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of.
It makes it look like we're trying to do something for a little bit of money.
Well, the buildings are in, that are vacant are not in very good condition. Who's going to bring those buildings to, to the point where you can actually have a business in them?
There are buildings though that are.
You know, I'm looking at these buildings and, and why did people move out and, and one big, the big eyesore.
So that's not, this was not going to solve that problem. Thank you.
I didn't think so, but I'm just saying.
That's a good question, Mavis. That's, that's another project we're working on and it'll probably need matching too. But this is, this is for the businesses that are.
Say I'm going to put a, I know how to open a business, but I know I have to have the, the shell, the business, the, the place.
Right. And I can list at least six right now that are empty and usable.
It takes money. So that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I have a timing question.
Yeah.
It sounded like a chicken and an egg and maybe I just heard it wrong. For to qualify, the process has to generate three new businesses and five full-time equivalent jobs. But if you're, if you're getting the money now before the whole.
In, in order to have fulfilled the requirements of the grant, we need to have ensured that we produce in this town three new full-time filled business owners doing something. And a total of three and a total of five full-time. So we can even have produced five full-time new business owners. But they want to see five people employed and at least three of them be, be business owners. So in other words, DHCD requires us to account for the money that they've given us.
What if you don't get the, get it?
Good question. We work really hard to get it.
They have to return the money or they just don't spend it to start with?
I think that they do everything they can to help us make sure we reach that goal.
But, but your question didn't get answered.
But yeah, it's answered as best I can.
Well, we had to do the same thing with the Northeast project. Yeah, we had to put down forty thousand dollars in order to get a million, same thing.
But that's a really good question. Do we, do we make another stab at it? Do we have another session, Craig, and, and another recruitment session? That's a good question and I can find out.
Because saying yes to twenty thousand is a whole different thing than saying yes to twenty thousand, which puts us on the hook for three times more. Potentially. If they take the money back, they could ever pay it out.
Yeah, yeah, I'll give you on the hook. You're committed to twenty thousand, I said. That's it, yeah.
Well, the other, we had. So they would not claw back.
We didn't, we had a grant a year ago about that was the, I think the interest starting to put the leg in here for the, um, uh, fiber optic. We got a, we got money and they did that for free and we had a, we got a grant. It was a long time ago and it was like a hundred grand and we had to, it's, one of those was tied into getting new businesses. And, you know, we, we, we did it. Uh, I can't remember what the grant was called, but it was the same thing. We had to get three new, three new, uh, three people hired in town. I can't remember what it was for.
Do you need a commitment tonight or can we wait till April last?
We, we, we need to, we're, um, trying to submit ahead of that because they're actually being nice enough. They got enough manpower to do a review of the grant when we've written it. Uh, and come back and say, okay, here's some tweaks and things that will help you get it. So we don't want to wait until that late, uh, to have the commitment.
Okay, can we just move the motion?
Yeah. And if they were there applying for grant, they might, they might get it.
Okay, I, I move that we, uh, provide the twenty thousand dollar grant match to an impact Main Street so that they can apply for this, uh, community business launch grant.
I second.
Question? All in favor?
I, no, I oppose.
All right, carried. I don't really have anything about the mayor, uh, uh, mayor's report. I think, uh, the, the parade was really great. Uh, everybody enjoyed that. Uh, I did a, I did a little count on, I guess, uh, twelve hundred, what did I say? Twelve hundred and sixty people watched the parade. I know, I, I actually have a video cam in my truck and I played it and had a little clicker and I counted, I went down the right side and counted everybody and then we'll watch it again and went down the left side. It's a pretty accurate count. And that's not include the people in the parade. So everybody in Hancock turned out to watch the parade. It's about the population of Hancock.
And everybody had a smile on their face.
Uh, thank you, anybody that had anything to do with the parade. And I think we're, we're looking forward to making a figure better next year. Uh, and I don't have anything else with the intent.
Yeah, my, my town manager's report's written. It'll be distributed tomorrow, but I'm finished. But mostly what we've been working on is the budget. I think we've put forward a pretty strong budget to help our taxpayers and our local businesses. Uh, we've been working on the dog park, its design and starting to project plan for that. I've got the HND report we just do for the ARPA money and that's just taking, it's a big report that takes a lot of time. So I'm working through that. HRSD's been taking a lot of time, but we're moving forward in a really good direction with them. And then also I'm meeting with the paving person to go through. Um, it looks like if we do this well, we might be able to. So I'm, I'm trying to juggle some of those things as well as all those, uh, water leak repairs that we did that all need to be paved over. That's also taking place before June thirtieth. So we're, we're budgeting all of those things out. So that's, that's mine in a nutshell, but I'll have a written report tomorrow.
Uh, you said you, about the dog park. Can you have, um, can we talk about that at the, at the work session possibly? Can you have a, a plan, a better plan or something? The one that was online wasn't too great. I couldn't see it that well.
Well, I, okay, I put hard copies in everybody's mailbox and I distributed what he gave. I can hand them to you tonight and I'm happy to do it. I've got one up on my wall and.
Thank you, I'd appreciate it.
Just didn't all produce.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's absolutely no problem. I'll put hard copies of that and nothing's on, nothing's urgent. I mean, I'm happy to.
Nice to have a few minutes to sit down and look at the plan together.
Yeah, that would be great. So I'll have hard copies put in everybody's mailbox and we can just maybe add it to a workshop.
Yeah, that gives us some more time.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Uh, is that all you have? Yeah. Um, council comments? Cindy?
I want to be really brief. Um, but I do have a couple of comments. Um, three years ago, we sat at a historic in Anco School at one of the Main Street sessions and Clinton Strand, Clinton, please raise your hand so everybody knows who you are, said, um, we used to have a community picnic. And in that conversation, and Kathy Boyd, raise your hand Kathy, her business can. And I and, uh, eventually Fletcher and Teresa Callum and Hillary Strand, or Hillary Hartnett Wilson and Matt and Fletcher started working on a community picnic. We had it all planned. We had it all planned. Who thought COVID would be there the next year? So this year, in the first week of April, we're all meeting again and we're determined to have this community picnic in September. Well, you know, it seems like this sort of an Anco school is going to have a picnic in May, but you know, an Anco is such a welcoming in town with such a big heart. We're going to have two picnics. So Hillary is so excited about this and she's just bringing in music and music and. No, we'll meet the first week in April, but it's going to be in September. I think last year we were around September fourteenth or maybe somewhere in that vicinity. So we are really, um, looking forward to this. I think it's going to be a great. And probably around the second week of September. So that's the first thing. Uh, the other thing is this is our preliminary budget. This is what it looks like. And I asked W M Matt, when we came in, is this online and they, but they're going to put it online, I know. And, you know, I said to both Robert Crawford and Jackie Phillips, what are you going to do with our money? You know, you're taking a lot of money from us. What are you going to do? And they said fifty-seven percent of it will be spent on the schools. Didn't argue that. I'm a former public school teacher. Didn't really tell me what the other forty-seven percent was going to go. Oh, that's the next question we'll ask. But, you know, look at this, look at this and study it and see, this is where your money is going to go. Do you agree with it? If you don't, let us know. Let us know if you do. So it's online. And the other thing is Maggie Long, who lives on the corner of Division and, um, Horn. She's our bird lady. She's. She sent an email to me, which I forwarded back about the Martin houses at the war. And Matt immediately responded and said, yes, one of them was vandalized. And yes, it will go back up this week and the parents had paid for it. And that's wonderful because those Martins will kill more mosquitoes in that area now. What do you mean, that's not true?
They don't eat them in the street.
They fly around.
Oh, well, anyway.
I verify you to put them up, swear they eat mosquitoes.
Okay. That's scary. You research afterwards.
Yeah, I don't want to worry. Rain on your roof.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Ben.
I want to thank Don for bringing the county's disparaging assessment to, to our attention and to know that we are being targeted and to find out, who did we tick off? That we are, that we are being assessed like this. And the further is, how do we influence the county to take another look at this?
April four.
How do we do that?
Support of supervisors meeting.
Okay. You know, but is there some way that, and, and like you said, is it, is it the entire town has to go and stand on, on the steps of the meeting? Whatever it takes, we need to do something because it's so, it's, well, you can appeal. But if you, we can appeal as a town.
That's going to take your.
Put it on. That's, that's all I'm asking. And that's very important. And I will echo, the parade was fabulous and I, I, it was the best yet.
Yes, please, on the assessments, whatever we can do individually as well as as a council and as a whole town. And likewise on the chain grain.
You started it.
I'm afraid not that quick, right?
On the assessments, we're not only, you know, we're working on our taxes in town, but we're taxed on county and town, as so is at Shake It To You. And their rate's much higher than ours. They're taxed on county and town. Cape Cove, which is extremely, thirty percent average, or Captain's Cove, yeah. But they're not a town, so they're only paying, this, you know, and I said, this is so unfair. Is, you know, my students used to say that to me all the time. This is not fair, Mrs. Rainan. And I'd say, no, it's not. Get used to it. Well, I'm not getting used to it too good.
They had an assessment about seven or eight years ago. There were weird things and we went, appealed the property and what, in two minutes they said, oh, we'll lower that. Really, they cut it in half, you know, it's like they, they realized they'd made a mistake, you know, and, and, but going as a town, as an individual, yeah. You know, if, if you get two, three hundred people signing up to go in there and test, it's going to, they're going to stand up and take notice of that, you know. But we still need to go into, as a town, if there's something we can do, you know, peel the whole town thing, you know.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah. And I didn't, I didn't realize it was that.
I think this, I think the way to approach this, I think there's something wrong with the methodology. What's happening in this town is all kinds of places being sold, so they can actually look at these comps. Well, crushed, but, you know, right, you know, Don's neighbor is not very much being sold probably in, in, you know, in that particular neighborhood. So I think their methodology is flawed. And if you point that out, I think he gets it.
Their methodology targets the densely populated areas where there are the most. But real estate is selling all over the eastern shore and we're getting hit with the taxes.
Well, thank you.